Good evening and welcome to the February 19th Fiscal Year 2020 Annual Operating Budget Public Hearing of the Prince George's County Board of Education. I would like to ask everyone to please turn off your wireless communication devices as they may interfere with the microphones and the taping of the meeting. Ms. Berkeley, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Ahmed?
Present.
Ms. Boozer Strather?
Here.
Mr. Burrows? Ms. Eubanks? Mr. Montero?
Present.
Mr. Murray? Ms. Page? Ms. Queen? Ms. Shepherd? Mr. Thomas? Mr. Valentine? Mr. Wallace? Mrs. Williams? Dr. Thornton?
Here. The Board of Education has convened this evening for the sole purpose of receiving public commentary on the Fiscal Year 2020 budget. The Board of Education is scheduled to adopt this budget at the February 21st meeting of the Board that will begin at 7:00 PM. The recommended budget will then be forwarded to our county executive, Ms. Angela Usterbrook, who will develop the proposed county budget and present it to the County Council in March of 2019. The County Council must adopt a budget which includes the school system's funding designated by category, and then it goes to the state legislature in April of 2019. The Board of Education will then reconcile with the county-approved budget, and it will be adopted at a regularly-scheduled meeting in June of 2019. Colleagues, we will now hear from our registered speakers with public comment, who will speak for three minutes in a public comment forum where the Board will listen to their comments. Board members will not respond to comments from the community. Our first registered speaker for this evening is Suzanne Johnson. Ms. Johnson, please come forward if you're here. Not seeing Ms. Johnson. The next speaker is Yael Lukin. Please come forward. Hello, Ms. Lukin.
Hello. So normally, I have other school psychologists standing behind me. I think I registered too early, and then they're just not here yet. So we'll just pretend.
We know you have a lot of supporters.
Right, so we'll just pretend they're already here.
Thank you, thank you.
But I'll go ahead.
Thank you.
So, as I listened to speakers at the meeting last Tuesday, I noticed that many parents and students shared concerns about support for our English-language learners and bilingual students. Other school psychologists have already addressed how high school psychologists-to-student ratios negatively impact our students and limits the services that we can provide. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about how the higher ratios. First, school psychologists directly contribute to our difficulty supporting English-language learners and bilingual students overall. When I was hired by Prince George's County Schools, I was supposed to be one of seven Spanish-speaking school psychologists in the district. By the time I started work in the summer, we were five. Now we're four. So, as our population grows, our numbers are shrinking. Retention of bilingual school psychologists in particular, though school psychologists overall, is a problem because they leave our districts for nearby districts with better ratios. Some of them leave the state altogether. As our numbers get smaller, we're limited to how many schools we can cover and how much support we're able to give to the schools that we do have. Due to increased need for bilingual assessments in elementary school at the younger years where there's still a lot of more kids or more Spanish dominant, we're all in only elementary school. So we don't have the staff to staff a bilingual school psychologist at any of our middle and high schools, full-time, or even part-time. So, and the middle and high schools is where we see a large need for social-emotional support, especially for our newcomers. The Office of Psychological Services is working towards recruiting new bilingual school psychologists, but we're competing against districts with lower ratios for a smaller pool of applicants who have many opportunities. So, until we're able to spend more time at our schools and provide additional support in Spanish or any language that is needed that we're able to provide, we're going to continue to be underutilized in the same way that all school psychologists currently are, and to the detriment of a growing population in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Our next speaker is Dr. Kristy Maslach. She's not here yet? Okay, well, if she comes, I'll recognize her. Oh, Ms. Johnson, I'm told that you're here. Would you please come forward?
Well, some people recognize me. Okay, so my name is Suzanne Johnson. I'm a parent that lives in Bowie, and my daughter attends Philistine Williams Spanish Immersion School. The parents at our school and other immersion programs have made a long-term commitment to a bilingual education for our students because we recognize the cognitive, social, academic, and employment benefits of being bilingual and bilingual. The success of the county's French immersion programs have encouraged the support for additional immersion programs. Therefore, we request the Board's support of items in the Fiscal Year 20 budget to expand the existing Spanish and Chinese immersion programs through the 5th grade. Further, we would request that the PGCPs leadership and the Board of Education take actions to prepare for Fiscal Year 21 as we move into the next phase of full implementation of language immersion programs to plan for the expansion to 6th through 12th grades for Spanish and Chinese immersion. We thank the Board for their prior support, including funding in the Fiscal Year 19 budget to hire teachers needed to extend these programs to 4th grade. In reviewing the CEO's proposed Fiscal Year 20 budget, it seems to be missing the increase of immersion teachers needed to support the expansion to 5th grade. For example, the proposed Fiscal Year 20 budget has 16 immersion teachers by school Philistine Williams, which is the exact same number that was in last year's budget when it was only up through 4th grade, but now we're expanding to 5th grade. So, with the expansion to 5th grade, the expected enrollment is about 500 students. So we would need about 20 classroom teachers for our school, not 16. Further, I'm concerned by the loss in Fiscal Year 19 of one of our two instructional lead teachers and several other instructional support staff. As with any other elementary school, we have students that need reading and math intervention and other support. Further, our parents often don't speak the immersion language, which makes it more challenging to assist our language learners. So with the loss of staff and significant increases in enrollment as we expand our grade level each year, I'm worried that our students aren't receiving the full support they need. In addition to staffing needs, we need curriculum resources to encompass the expansion to 5th grade and continued funding for MION. It's very challenging to find reading materials in the immersion languages, so MION has been a critical resource that offers our students literacy skills that complement Common Core standards. Given that entry to the full language immersion programs is almost entirely limited to kindergarten, we must provide the support needed to maximize student retention at these schools. Therefore, I ask the Board and PGCPs leadership to ensure the Fiscal Year 20 budget includes the resources our language learners need to be fully successful. The success of the immersion programs is a key component in making PGCPs a competitive school system that prepares students to contribute to our diverse communities with essential language and cognitive skills that are in high demand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Our next speaker is Ms. Teresa Dudley. Ms. Dudley, if you're here, please come forward. Not seeing Ms. Dudley. Our next speaker is Michelle Clark. Ms. Clark? No. The next speaker is Jason Gordon. Mr. Gordon, please come forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. First, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak on behalf of athletic directors in Prince George's County. Oh. Being an athletic director in Prince George's County has actually been a dream job that I could never have imagined myself. It gives me the opportunity to work with student athletes who are college and career-ready, to give them an opportunity to expand their post-secondary goals, to prepare for a lifetime ahead of them. One thing that we've been advocating for, for probably the last three years, has been that athletic directors be full-time. I reiterate, like I said the last time, currently, we're the only school district that has half-time athletic directors. This particular year, I'm speaking from my heart now. I usually have prepared notes, but this particular year was actually kind of disheartening because we had the fewest number of athletic directors at my s- not athletic directors, but the fewest number of student athletes to actually commit to colleges this year. This was also another year that I was on cycle. And being on cycle, I didn't have the opportunity to actually monitor their grades, to actually stay on top of their grades. And then recently, we just had another athletic director meeting in the county to which more responsibility was actually placed on athletic directors. Right now, if you were to look at the Student-Athlete Handbook in Prince George's County, the handbook just that you see, not even the MPSAA handbook, that handbook is 137 pages. And all 137 pages were responsible for making sure that our student athletes are within the code, also eligible, and then also carrying out the vision that we have in this county of preparing college and careers-ready students. To do that at a half-time level and also be a half-time teacher who also has a course load of over 100 students, and then to also manage another 400 students, managing their grades, managing, making sure that they've taken the SAT, that they're registered for the NCAA, some of those things have slipped through the crack this year. And the reason why they've slipped through the crack is because of the dual responsibilities of being an athletic director and as well as a teacher. Again, I reiterate that we are the only school district in which Lola says hi. We are the only school, and Jason says hi too. We are the only school district in which this occurs. I would implore the Board to please create a full-time FTE for teachers, I mean, for athletic directors to be full-time. Again, that would free up another half FTE, which is hard to fill, time teacher, to fill in core subjects, and even that's also causing overflow in health and PE classes. Those classes averages 40 to 50 students. Thank you for this time, and I also implore the Board, this is off the cuff, but I do think that we should remove the interim title from our current CEO. My brother, who is Jay Window Gordon, a prominent attorney in Baltimore City, when he was addressing the filling of the police chief position, stated that it's best to have somebody from within who knows the problems that we're already facing in order to correct them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Our next speaker is Terry Dandy. If you please come forward. Not seeing Mr. Dandy, or Mrs. Dandy, or Ms. Dandy. Annette Jones, please come forward, Ms. Jones. Not seeing Ms. Jones. The next speaker is Jonathan Abraham. Is Jonathan here? Okay, Jon. Right on time, Mr. Abraham, please come forward. There's a mic here. This one?
Yes, sir. You will indulge me a minute? For the record, Mr. Chairman, my name is Jonathan Abraham.
Yes.
A parent of kindergarten child in Mount Rainier Elementary. Today, I'll be talking about the Spanish Integration Budget Amendment. And as we know from last hearing, about six speakers have submitted testimony orally in support of their proposed amendment, and that's in the first two budget hearing sessions. Letters of support, and that's about 20, perhaps by our count, to the Board include the Mayor of Mount Rainier, Melinda Miles, Councilwoman Selena Benitez, and Chevali Shaw, Councilman Luke Chesick, and just today, Delegate Julian Ivey is also supporting this budget amendment. I spoke with County Council Representative Denny Taveras at the last hearing, and she too is in support of this budget proposal for the amendment. Now, in terms of other matters, the Office of General Counsel indicates broad concurrence in a letter to us with the methods that we use to study the data files sent to the state of Maryland, both with the MCAP results and also with the demographic data. And we've, you know, we've sort of like struck home the point that, you know, the, you know, from the RAND study, that about, you get about 20, 25 to 40% improvement in English literacy from the introduction of a bilingual program in a particular, in a particular school. The Maryland Legislature further is budgeting hundreds of millions of additional dollars in this upcoming budget season. And this is in a letter from Senator Mike Miller. And he, at least in writing, has said that it's a priority for them that they're going to submit to the governor a funding bill equalling hundreds of millions of additional dollars as a bridge to the full implementation of the KUAN Commission. And you have experience, obviously, with commissions from 2002, one that bears your name as well. And in terms of, you know, the expected outlays of these funds, full-day pre-K, grant funding, concentrations of poverty, increased funding for special education, and increased funding for behavioral health and training. Now, I think there's broad agreement that this would be a good thing for schools in Mount Rainier. But I also want to talk about the fact that this doesn't happen in isolation. Dolores Milhouse, who was the founder of My Bilingual Child, began a movement, and I had spoken frequently with her in the last couple of years in saying, "How did you do this?" And we're now coming to you with her blueprint to say, "Hey, we would like to expand on this." And if you'll indulge me one second. The follow-on effect is also that we're going to pass on this knowledge just as we received it. We anticipate to have spillover effects to other schools around us, and I think that's in our power to do. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. The next speaker is Nicole Clem. Ms. Clem, I don't see her, so I'll... Oh, she's here?
Here.
Oh, sorry.
Hello, good evening, Board members, Chairman. I am Nicole Clem, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Spanish Integration Committee of Mount Rainier. I think you're familiar with our proposal to add one full-time Spanish teacher to Mount Rainier Elementary School, one full-time Spanish teacher for Thomas Stone Elementary School, and a one coordinator to be split between both of the schools. We expect to spread, as my partner Jonathan Abraham said, to spread our best practices and lessons that we learned throughout the Prince George's County. We understand that it's in the interest of the Board to, to spread language instruction, and we want to, we simply want to participate in that. And we're saying that Mount Rainier is a town that is prepared for this. We have a great interest in this, and we think that it would benefit our community and spread through the rest of Prince George's County. One point, we came to last week's budget meeting, and we heard a lot of people speaking on different topics. And one of the topics that resounded with us was how many people were speaking about the need for more psychologists and more trauma counseling. And we believe that evidence from Cesar Chavez and Cool Spring Pilot Language Programs revealed that teaching the native language also allows for educators to discover urgent student needs that may have been hidden by language barriers. We've actually heard educators tell us that, that in their personal experiences, they've discovered this. So for immigrant students, teachers, and counselors, they're able to find the students who need trauma counseling and are able to get them the help that they need. This also includes not just traumatized students, but certainly English-language learners who maybe have special needs. They have a learning disability that is covered up by the fact that they're learning English as another language. And if they were able to learn, say, Spanish as well, then that maybe allow them to, educators that work with them, to find out those special needs that they may have. I am, I mentioned at the last budget meeting that I am an English-language teacher. I currently teach for Prince George's Community College. I've been teaching for about nine years in through K through 16 settings. And it is my opinion that promoting a culture of bilingualism will be better for all of us. In fact, the English-only program is a kind of a form of modern-day segregation in our communities that we need to rectify by creative thinking. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. The next speaker is Joan Patti. Okay. Jean, Jean, sorry, Jean.
It's okay, no one can pronounce my name. It's impossible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the Board, for listening. My name is John Patti, I have a son who's in Mount Rainier Elementary. I want to say thank you for listening to this information about the amendment, and also thank you to the principal and the teachers of that school who are doing a great job and working really hard. I'm here personally because I feel that it's a bitterly competitive world out there, and I am hoping to arm my child with as many resources as possible. And I feel that bilingualism is one of those resources, and I feel it's going to benefit him, and I feel, in my limited understanding of it, that it can benefit all of the kids in PG County. And then there are just a couple of more specific points that I'd like to add. And one is that we feel that the amendment will go to some of the matters of student-teacher ratios. So there's a, there's a high ratio of students to teachers, and part of this is to try to get at that, that ratio. Another thing is that there's, there are a lot of Spanish speakers in the community, and it seems like this amendment could be beneficial to them because it would help leverage the language resources that they have instead of, you know, in some ways, making it harder for them in the schools. So, that's it. And again, it's just our hope that the amendment will benefit all of the kids. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. The final speaker is Jessica Potts. Ms. Potts, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Jessica, and I am a dance teacher here at Fairmont Heights High School. As a second-year teacher in dance, I find it challenging to get resources from my dance department because the budget for creative arts, because the budget for creative arts that is filtered through the dance office. I find that the current budget does not fully support all of the dance programs in PGCPs. By support, I'm referring to budget for costumes, instructional materials, dance materials, choreography, and dance field trips that will help inspire the students and help expose them, and expose them to dance and the appreciation for dance as an art form. What are the different resources within the county that will help support creative arts financially, specifically dance programs such as mine, who might not receive as much funding as other subjects and departments? This funding will go towards the overall success of the dance, of dance and creative arts and, and help the students gain a well-rounded, multifaceted experience in training in a dance class that they might take to other parts of their lives when they graduate high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Michelle Clark has arrived. Ms. Clark, come forward, please. Ms. Clark, you may proceed.
That's even too short for me. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for listening again. It's good to see you all before the snow comes. And thank you very much for calling it already. That was a very good move. Once again, I just want to speak to you a little bit about the lost steps. As, as I've already told you, the four steps has made a great impact on my life. But I'm still here. Even though last year I had the most miserable year of my teaching career, and there were a variety of reasons for that, this year, thanks to our CEO and some, some folks making sure I got to the right place where I belong, I'm having a wonderful year again, and now I remember why I love teaching. It's because of those little people. I even have on my, on my shirt here, children are my business because they are. I love the babies that I teach. That's why I'm here. I came from Howard County where I was an instructional assistant. Had I stayed there, of course, I had to be provisional my first year because I was an instructional assistant. That doesn't count for teaching experience. But had I been able to stay there, or had I gone back there, I would be making approximately $12,000 to $15,000 more per year than what I currently am. However, I've worked in the area of Clarksville. And even though the children needed us and in early childhood special ed, it's very rewarding because of the small things, it doesn't take much to put a smile on my face. Sometimes it's just a child saying, "Miss Michelle," when they've never said your name for the entire year, and it's December. That's the reward I get out of teaching. At the same time, by staying, I've put myself into great financial hardship. And it has come time that as things have gotten better, that we need to make this right. I am on the negotiations team, and we will be, of course, bringing that forward, among other things. But as our economy has gotten better, other members of the county in other professions, such as the police and the firefighters, and even regular county employees, there's been some effort to make them right. One year, the firefighters actually got three steps. But there has been no effort whatsoever, and I don't know, and believe me, I'll be talking to the county as well because I know the funding has to come from somewhere. And I know you guys don't have that mechanism. But in short, please, we need our steps back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I'm sorry, Ms. Clark, Ms. Clark. Ms. Jones, please come forward.
Good evening, everyone. Well, it's so nice to speak to you again. I prepared a speech, but I'm going to talk from my heart. I really had to make it here this evening. And it's all about the passion when teachers say, "We're not in it for the money, it's the passion." I'm one of those teachers. And I came from Charleston, South Carolina, to teach in Prince George's County. And the reason I'm here was my superintendent then encouraged me and told me one of the best county in the country, coming from Jamaica, was Prince George's County. I took her advice and I came here. And I'm in love with it, and I've not left, although I've gotten other offers. But here is my story where I'm coming to you to say, "Think about teachers like me, who are close to retirement, and why is it I'm really advocating, so wherever the fun can be, find that fun to take us to the right step." I came here, it's about 15 years I'm here now, and it's always my dream to purchase my own home. I couldn't, I say. Credit is okay, but when you'd get a pre-approval, "Oh, you can purchase a home up to $400,000, $600,000," it sounds It sounds good, but the reality is, if when they work out that mortgage payment, I will never able to pay for it. And why? Because of my pay. So what I, in years, I'm almost going to that retirement, and I'm looking down the road, I need a home for myself. So I break it down and said, "Can I find a home like 300, which is hard to find, 200?" Yes, but the mortgage payment, my salary, when it breaks down, I cannot pay for it. So I had to know what I had to do going to my retirement fund, and I had to take out almost 50 percent of that retirement fund to pay towards my principal, to cut down so that I can survive, so that I don't become mortgage poor, just paying for my home. Consider people like me when you're allocating their fund for the budget to bring us up on step because it's hard. We cannot get qualified, we cannot live in decent home. So when you make us happy, you're even happier. Think of us as a teacher, we're doing so much now, but let's say you, we are, we're going overboard and doing all these things, and you pay us well. We even do better for you, better for the county, and I want you to consider these things and just bring us up. It's all about the money, money, because in the long run, we cannot go to the supermarket and just say we work for Prince George's County, and it's going to be okay. Thank you.
I'm told that one of our other speakers has arrived, Dr. Maslach, do you hear? Please come forward. Thank you, Ms. Jones, for your testimony. Please come forward.
Sorry, my lateness is the perils of technology taking me to the old high school instead of this new one. So, my name is Dr. Kristy Maslach. Good evening, and this is the second time I'm speaking with you all to support school psychologists and our request for 25 full-time positions to be added to the budget. When I tell people I'm a school psychologist, most people have no idea what that means. Usually, I say I'm a problem solver who's trained in child development, learning, behavior, and mental health. I'm capable of helping students, teachers, and schools in many ways that we know improve academic achievement and social-emotional learning, and, but I spend most of my time sitting in meetings and testing children to determine if they have disabilities. When adequately staffed, I'm capable of so much more, including delivering the kinds of mental health and behavioral support so many teachers, parents, and students were pleading for at the last Board of Ed public budget hearing. Here's a list of just some of those supports I could be providing. Assisting schools and school systems to develop, implement, and evaluate universal screening for academic, behavioral, and social-emotional barriers, barriers to learning, school-wide positive behavior intervention and behavioral support programs, social-emotional learning programs, evidence-based policies and programs to prevent bullying, effective, equitable, and culturally responsive discipline policies and practices. I could be consulting with teachers and schools to help infuse social-emotional learning into their classroom and their curriculum, collect and interpret academic and behavior data to monitor response to interventions. I could conduct classroom lessons on resiliency and coping strategies. I can conduct group counseling to address social skills, anger management, coping skills. I could provide individual counseling to address more intensive school-related social-emotional issues. I could do staff development and parent workshops on a broad range of mental health and behavioral health issues, including depression, anxiety, trauma, loss and grief, and stressors due to the influences of things like poverty or homelessness. So we could be doing much, much more, but we are not adequately staffed to be doing those kinds of things. So that's why, in addition to adding the 25 full-time school psychologist positions, we really are asking that the Board of Education, the CEO, and the Office of Special Education, the Division of Special Education and Student Services, to work with the Office of Psychological Services on a 10-year plan to help us be better in line with our National Association's recommendations of a ratio of one school psychologist to 500 to 700 students. Right now, on average, we're at one school psychologist for 1,423 students. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. I wanted to make sure I do not overlook any other speakers who signed up who may have arrived. If not, this concludes the last of our three budget hearings for the proposed operating budget. I want to thank the community for attending each of our three hearings, our teachers, our staff, elected officials. Dr. Goldson, thank you and your staff for supporting this effort, and board colleagues, thank you for your engagement. This ends our hearing, and good evening to all.